Okay. Ready to go? Dieter, will you close the door, please? There's some young, aspiring black belts disturbing. Okay, this is call of the order of the planning commission meeting for January ninth, two thousand fourteen. You have the roll call, Sarah?
Thank you. Watson?
Here.
Probst?
President.
Standard?
Here.
Vogel?
Here.
And Jaxheimer?
Here.
We do have a quorum this evening with five members present.
Okay. You join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next agenda item is election of officers, and I think we're gonna try to table that?
That's correct. I'd like to recommend that we postpone the election of officers. As you may have noted in the roll call, there were three members, prior members, who were not called. That is because the city council did not meet last week to make appointments for three of our members whose terms expired on the first of the new year. So, I would suggest that we just postpone this, put it on our January twenty-third meeting when we have a full complement of commissioners here.
Do we need to vote on that?
Nope.
Nope, okay, so tabled. All right, approval of minutes for the previous meeting. Anybody have any comments or changes to the minutes? None? So then, motion to approve? Unanimous? So approved?
Thank you.
Okay, we have two cases tonight. We'll start with the first one. I'll read that into the record, and then we'll begin with the staff's presentation. Case sub thirteen dash zero zero five, Innovation Park filing number one, request for approval of the final plat to convert three unplanted tracks of land into three platted lots, and one track containing nine point eight-three acres located in the northwest quarter of the northeast quarter, section twenty-six, and in the southwest quarter of the southeast quarter of section twenty-three. Township twelve south, range sixty-nine west of the sixth prime aridium, more specifically at five six nine seven five seven zero one and five seven one one Trout Creek Road, also county road twenty-five, Woodland Park, Teller County, Colorado, as requested by Sturman Properties.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Tonight is the Innovation Park filing number one for the final plat, and this relates to deeded property owned by Sturman Industries and addressed fifty-six ninety-seven, fifty-seven oh one, and fifty-seven eleven Trout Creek Road. And our applicant has sent their representative, Ms. Sharon Rochack, here, and if you have any questions, then after the staff presentation, she's available to answer any questions. We also have asked our city utilities director, Mr. Kip Wiley, to come and answer any questions that you might have about the utilities recommendation included in the presentation. And this proposal is to subdivide the existing deeded land, and that also includes two parcels, Parcels One and Two, approximately nine point eight-three acres, and this would be to divide, subdivided into three lots. And the first lot would be approximately four acres, and Lot Two would be nearly two acres, and Lot Three nearly three acres. And this action is being done really to clear up and create legal descriptions for those lots. There are existing homes on two of those lots, and there has been an existing home on one of those, what would become one of those lots, and also to allow for future sale of Lot Two, and in addition to that, it has an added benefit of protecting the gated Innovation Way area, as well as several utility easements that needed some cleanup as well. And when we review a subdivision, we review it to chapter seventeen, which relates to subdivisions, and several of those sections were relevant to this. Section seventeen point two-four, minor subdivisions, seventeen point three-six dedications, and seventeen point four-oh. This slide is a zoning map, and before you wonder what this label here is, it says Planned Unit Development. This was actually rezoned with the sanctuary, so it should actually be purple and Planned Unit Development as well. It just hasn't, it's an update to our GIS system that's kind of lagged behind a bit. But the property that we're talking about, the deeded property, is at the southern end of Sturman Industries' PUD, and it relates to these parcels here. So the overall warranty deed extends through the whole parameter of it, and then there are also two warranty deeds that spell out Parcels One and Two. This is an aerial map of this property, and I've labeled what would become Lots One, Two, and Three on here. Google Maps also has some issues. Apparently, they need to update their streets as well, so I've crossed out the streets and added them where they're appropriate. Innovation Way, actually, to the west of this piece of land, as well as Trout Creek Road to the south here. This is a plan of the existing, how it looks right now as deeded. Again, that overall warranty deed covers the whole area, and then there's two parcels that are spelled out in two separate warranty deeds, with the whole thing under deeded. And this will clean up Innovation Way to where it will be, it's a private right-of-way, and it'll be better noted, as well as several of the utility easements, and you'll see that on this next slide here where I have the final plat. So Lot One, again, three point nine-eight acres, Lot Three, right here in the middle of the two, and it's three point one-eight acres, and Lot Two, two point zero-seven acres. Here's Innovation Way, so it's, obviously, it's attractive land that's mapped out much better on the final plat, as well as several of the easements. So it's, a lot of this is to clean up what's, what really needs to be formalized and legally described. Here are some of the areas that we found to comply to the chapters that I mentioned earlier. There is, of course, easy access, there's three roads surrounding, in bringing you in access-wise into this subdivision. We have Innovation Way, which is to the west of that subdivision, and then we have Trout Creek Road, which comes in off of Highway twenty-four. And the two lots do have existing homes, and you'll see down here, I've put pictures in. Lot Two has this as an existing home, and Lot Three has this picture here as an existing home. And Lot One does have an area where there was a structure that was placed there, it's since been removed, but it was in place during the annexation in two thousand and four. The land was found to be suitable topographically to subdivide, and it is in close proximity to several facilities and resources within our community. Park Meadowwood Park, excuse me. If you take Innovation Way north through that subdivision, you end up right there at Meadowwood Park. And then Cherish Bible College, of course, is to the south of this area off of Trout Creek Road. They do have an approved drainage report that was a part of the PUD amendment, and all of the easements as part of our subdivision agency review have been reviewed by several utility, all of the relevant utility agencies, Black Hills, Century Link, as well as City Utilities, reviewed and found those easements acceptable. Our utilities director, Kip Wiley, did review this. The lots currently have existing well and septic system. Connection to city water and sewer is preferred, but it's not going to be required until a problem arises. And if well or septic system fails and cannot be replaced without a state or county permit, then a water tap and sewer tap must be purchased and connected into water and sewer system. One of the areas that did vary just a little bit, that we need to acquire a variance, and as part of the subdivision process, we are allowed to do that through city council as a variance motion as a part of the subdivision. This relates to section seventeen point four-oh, point zero five zero. Lots One and Three do meet the forty-foot frontage to street right-of-way requirement. Of course, Lot One meets that in two ways, with Innovation Way as well as Trout Creek Road, and Lot Three does meet that forty-foot frontage requirement along Trout Creek Road. However, there is a forty-foot easement, ingress egress utility easement, but it's not a street right-of-way that comes in, and it's been used for quite a while into entry and exit of the Lot Two, because this is where one of those existing homes is. So, staff is asking for a variance as part of the submittal as a separate motion for city council approval. Land dedication and park capital fee, we have recommended that it's not applicable to dedicate park land and a fee in, as a part of this particular subdivision. This subdivision is only three lots. It's not particularly big in size or density. These are large acre residential lots. Cherish Bible College is to the south, so it has its own self-sustaining park needs. In fact, I think it even has a little picnic area right there on its site. Meadowwood Sports Complex to the north, again, that's accessed through Innovation Way to the north, and you filter right out into that park, and that's a community park, so it serves the needs. During annexation, each of these proposed lots had an existing home on them to include Lot One. Lots Two and Three still have an existing home on them, and in the past with other subdivisions, the policy has been that we would not assess a park capital fee when it's already been built out. And this did go to the Parks and Recreation Board last night, and they unanimously approved that staff recommendation that park land dedication or fees in lieu of land dedication is not applicable. Staff recommends approval of this subdivision, and I'll read these verbatim so that we do not lose content. Number one, prior to city of Woodland Park recording the Mylar for this minor subdivision final plat, the applicant shall provide all necessary utility easements to meet the needs of IREA in the city of Woodland Park. The Innovation Park filing number one subdivision plat needs to be signed dated submitted as a Mylar for signature and recording with an affixed seal by the surveyor after approval by city council. Payment of the water development fee of two thousand dollars per lot must be received prior to final plat recording, and a reminder that that approval of this subdivision is contingent upon that Parks and Recreation Board review and recommendation for approval and city council final approval of our staff recommendation, which finds that park capital fee, park capital fee and land dedication as not applicable, and the applicant understands that that fee could still be assessed if it's not approved by city council. Are there any questions?
Any questions of the staff?
Yes.
In the event that Sturman opts to eventually develop the land directly to the north of the properties that we're talking about, would Innovation Way be the access for that?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe so.
What's the, just very roughly, what's the distance between this boundary line on the north end and Meadowwood Park? You know, is it a mile, half a mile?
I'm not really sure I can answer that. I would say it's, but it can't be any more than...
About a mile.
About a mile.
Plenty of distance, in other words.
Sharon's saying about a mile.
Okay. How about the folks that have residences in, what, currently Lot Three and Lot Two?
Mm-hmm.
They're, it's okay with them to do what's to be proposed?
Right. Well, Lot Two is, I believe, being rented, and that particular individual is aware of this action, and I'm not really sure on Lot Three. Sharon, is that being, yes, maybe Sharon could answer that question if that's okay. Can she approach?
Thank you.
Please state your name and address, please, Sharon.
Yes, I will. Sharon Rochack, and my address is, my physical address is forty-five Leisure Lane in Woodland Park. And I represent Sturman Properties LLC tonight, and thank you. And in answer to your question, all of this property is owned by Sturman Properties LLC, and it is rented. And all parties are aware of it, but...
Understood. Thank you.
And I'd love to answer any other questions that you have about that.
Do you have anything else you wish to say before we ask you questions?
I don't think so. I think Lisa's done a great job putting it all together for you.
Okay.
And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions for either staff or applicant? I have a question. Staff, when you say built out, property, so this is considered built out, and there's no plans for further development of the property?
Yes.
Either one.
Okay.
So in terms of the cities and regulations, is it considered a build-out?
Right. Because we've, at the time of annexation, there was a complete build-out on all three lots. There was a structure on Lot One, and there, of course, is a structure on Lot Two and Lot Three, and those are being used right now. And there is also the water and sewer systems in place. Yeah, we consider that built out.
Okay. So the follow-on, is there any future development plans with this, with these properties?
By development, do you mean the building of structures?
Structures, yes.
Okay, there definitely could be another house on Lot One. Yes, there's a well and septic there, and formerly there was a structure on there that has since been removed. There is also a barn on that property and a shed, and it's completely ready for another house if the owners so desire to do that. Right now, their main objective would be to, you know, to clean up, thank you, Lisa, that was the right word, clean up the unplatted parcels so that they had the proper utility easements, and to protect that south entrance to the Sturman properties, because that was just simply a little easement over an unplanted piece of land. And so what we're trying to do is make sure that it is platted as a sixty-foot right-of-way so that at some future point when that road is improved, that it will have the right amount of space to do it right and in the right position. So that's just not there by accident, really.
Okay, thank you. I have one other, the variance.
Yes.
Are we, the planning commission, expected to express an opinion on that for city council, or is that something that council addresses directly?
That, I believe, is just a motion for city council to approve.
Okay.
Correct? Sally?
No, just a minor correction, that in your staff recommendation, it introduces the approval of this plat with the variance as part of that approval.
So we, in effect, do...
So you are, in effect, making a recommendation to include the variance.
Got it.
Thank you for that.
Okay, any further questions?
Well, anything that's happening conflicted all with what Cherish is doing to the south with that very, very sizable enterprise?
No.
Don't need to worry about it?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
No further questions, we'll move on. Is there anybody in the audience that has signed up for public comment on this particular issue? Okay. Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
Any final questions? Okay, deliberation? Anybody has any remarks, yay or pro or against? If not, then I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So move. Second?
Second.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch who's...
Second.
Steve. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, I'll take roll. Watson?
Aye.
Rollinger?
Aye.
Standard?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
And Jaxheimer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously, and this will move forward to the city council agenda on February sixth.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. We'll move on to the next one. Read that into the record. CUP, conditional use permit thirteen dash zero zero eight, residential care home. To consider a request for conditional use permit approval to allow for a residential care home that will provide a personalized individual program of sustainable recovery for two females from prescription medication misuse within a suburban residential zone on the property at one one-five Troll Road, legally described as Lot Three of Aspen Acres. The applicant's name is Ms. Judith Ann Miller, founder and CEO of Courage to Change.
Yep, this is a conditional use permit, and our applicant, Ms. Judith Ann Miller, is here this evening, and she can answer any questions, has actually a presentation on the parameters of the program plan and what the program's all about. And this is with regards to a conditional use permit to allow a resident use care home, residential care home to this existing four thousand four hundred and fifty-eight square foot suburban residential zone, single-family home. And this would be to allow no more than eight professional career-oriented women who misuse prescription medications. And this is relevant to sections eighteen dot zero nine dot zero nine zero, Table of Permitted Uses, which is section J, Health Services number one, residence care homes in accordance with section eighteen point three three point one three zero, which is a conditional use of the suburban residential zone. This is a zoning map, and the lot with the red circle around it, that's the lot that this house exists on, that there would be this residential, residence care home placed in, and as you can see, there's several uses that surround this particular area to the northeast and northwest. That is actually Teller County jurisdiction, and the light yellow represents suburban residential. The pink fuchsia color is community commercial along Highway twenty-four, and then we also have the orange, which is multifamily use. This is an aerial, and it also shows some surrounding properties, and as you can see, this here in the circle, that's the, currently, the Hobbs Home, which would be used, sold and used for this as it, if it goes through. And this over here to the northeast is the Woodland Bed and Breakfast, and that's actually in Teller County jurisdiction. And then, this is actually over two hundred feet, this is seventy-seven Troll Road, this is a single-family home, and then we also have Andrews Candy, everyone's familiar with that, off of Highway twenty-four here, as well as Swichelay Restaurant. This is to show you all of the adjacent properties that were notified of this particular conditional use permit. Everything in green is where we sent a letter to let them know about this particular use and invited them to this meeting, as well as to city council first reading and second reading public hearing. And they also got notification of a neighborhood meeting, which took place last Friday evening, and as part of that meeting, we were going to present the parameters of the program and answer any questions. Ms. Judith Miller was here at that time. No one did show to that meeting. We did receive several calls after that, and most of those concerns related to property values, and I think once I informed them of the parameters of this program being for eight women-only prescription medication misuse, and the fact that these particular individuals will want to remain anonymous, that put a lot of those concerns to rest, and a lot of them expressed support by the end of the phone calls. This here is to let you know, again, that's the Teller County area, and what we did there, whenever we have a conditional use that's within three miles of Teller County, we always do a, route out our application to our Teller County partners and let them know their planning department, and they review it, and then give us a recommendation. And they did come back on Tuesday and provide us with formal notification that they don't have any objections to this particular use. They did just want to let us know of a couple of considerations, and all of those had already been considered at that time, so... This is a site map, and as you can see, there is approximately over a hundred and eighty feet of driveway that goes into this particular single-family home off of Troll Road, and it goes up into some tree lines as well. Again, the Teller County jurisdiction noted here. Now, this is a unique conditional use permit, and actually, this might be the first time that we've done this particular conditional use permit in the city of Woodland Park. We have specific residence care home standards that an applicant has to meet in order to obtain their conditional use permit. I'm going to go through those standards and talk about how we feel this particular request complies. Standard number one is that the structure will appear similar to other dwellings in that particular neighborhood, and this is a picture of this dwelling, single-family home dwelling that they would be in, and here are some other pictures of area structures. This is actually the Bed and Breakfast to the northeast, and then...
Structure on there that has since been removed. There is also a barn on that property and a shed. And it's, it's completely ready for another house if, if the owners so desire to do that. Right now their main objective would be to, you know, to clean up. Thank you Lisa, that was the right word. Clean up the unplatted parcels so that they had the proper utility easements and to protect that south entrance to the Sturman properties. Because that was just simply a little easement over an unplatted piece of land. And so what we're trying to do is make sure that it is platted as a sixty-foot rightaway so that at some future point when that road is improved, that it will have the right amount of space to do it right and in the right position. So that's just not there by accident, really.
Okay, thank you. What other, the variance?
Yes.
Are we, the planning commission, expected to express an opinion on that for city council? Or is that something that council addresses directly?
That, I believe, is just a motion for city council to approve.
Okay.
Correct? Sally?
No, just a minor correction that in your staff recommendation, it introduces the approval of this plat with the variance as part of that approval.
So we in effect do-
So you are, in effect, making a recommendation to include the variance.
Got it.
Thank you for that.
Okay, any further questions?
Well, anything that's happening conflicted all with what Cheris is doing to the south with that very, very sizable enterprise?
No.
Don't need to worry about it?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
No further questions, we'll move on. Is there anybody in the audience that has signed up for public comment on this particular issue? Okay. Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
Any final questions? Okay, deliberation? Anybody has any remarks? Yay or pro or against? If not, then I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second?
Second. Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch who's-
Second.
Steve. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, I'll take role. Watson?
Aye.
Rollinger?
Aye.
Standard?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
And Joxheimer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously and this will move forward to the city council agenda on February sixth.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. We'll move on to the next one. Read that into the record. CUP, conditional use permit thirteen dash zero zero eight residential care home. To consider a request for conditional use permit approval to allow for residential care home that will provide a personalized individual program of sustainable recovery for two females from prescription medication misuse within a suburban residential zone on the property at one, one five Troll Road. Legally described as lot three of Aspen Acres. The applicant's name is Ms. Judith Anne Miller, founder and CEO of Courage to Change.
Yep, this is a conditional use permit and our applicant, Ms. Judith Anne Miller, is here this evening. And she can answer any questions, has actually a presentation on the parameters of the program plan and what the program's all about. And this is with regards to a conditional use permit to allow a resident use care home, residential, residential care home to this existing four thousand four hundred and fifty-eight square foot suburban residential zone, single-family home. And this would be to allow no, no more than eight professional career-oriented women who misuse prescription medications. And this is relevant to sections eighteen dot zero nine dot zero nine zero, table of permitted uses, which is section J, health services number one, residence care homes in accordance with section eighteen point three three point one three zero, which is a conditional use of the suburban residential zone. This is a zoning map and the lot with the red circle around it, that's the lot that this house exists on, that there would be this residential, residence care home placed in. And as you can see, there's several uses that surround this particular area to the northeast and northwest. That is actually Teller County jurisdiction. And the light yellow represents suburban residential. The pink fuchsia color is community commercial along highway twenty-four. And then we also have the orange, which is multifamily use. This is an aerial and it also shows some surrounding properties. And as you can see, this here in the circle, that's the currently the Hobbs Home, which would be used, sold and used for this as if it goes through. And this over here to the northeast is the Woodland Bed and Breakfast. And that's actually in Teller County jurisdiction. And then this is actually over two hundred feet. This is seventy-seven Troll Road. This is a single-family home. And then we also have Andrews Candy, everyone's familiar with that, off of highway twenty-four here, as well as Swishelay Restaurant. This is to show you all of the neigh- adjacent properties that were notified of this particular conditional use permit. Everything in green is where we sent a letter to let them know about this particular use and invited them to this meeting, as well as to city council first reading and second reading public hearing. And they also got notification of a neighborhood meeting, which took place last Friday evening. And as part of that meeting, we were going to present the parameters of the program and answer any questions. Ms. Judith Miller was here at that time. No one did show to that meeting. We did receive several calls after that. And most of those concerns related to property values. And I think once I informed them of the parameters of this program being for eight women-only prescription medication misuse and the fact that these particular individuals will want to remain anonymous, that put a lot of those concerns to rest and a lot of them expressed support by the end of the phone calls. This here is to let you know, again, that's the Teller County area. And what we did there, whenever we have a conditional use that's within three miles of Teller County, we always do a, route out our application to our Teller County partners and let them know their planning department. They review it and then give us a recommendation. They did come back on Tuesday and provide us with formal notification that they don't have any objections to this particular use. They did just want to let us know of a couple of considerations and all of those had already been considered at that time. So. This is a site map and as you can see, there is approximately over a hundred and eighty feet of driveway that goes into this particular single-family home off of Troll Road and it goes up into some tree lines as well. Again, the Teller County jurisdiction noted here. Now, this is a unique conditional use permit and actually, this might be the first time that we've done this particular conditional use permit in the city of Woodland Park. We have specific residence care home standards that an applicant has to meet in order to obtain their conditional use permit. I'm going to go through those standards and talk about how we feel this particular request complies. Standard number one is that the structure will appear similar to other dwellings in that particular neighborhood. And this is a picture of this dwelling, single-family home dwelling that they would be in. And here are some other pictures of area structures. This is actually the Bed and Breakfast to the northeast. And then this is also a structure that's along that same southern portion of Troll Road up by the Bed and Breakfast. And then here are some pictures of the multifamily units that are down the road. And we do feel that they, we felt they maintained the same appearance and they, they do plan to maintain what it is now. It exists and it looks quite nice right now. Standard number two talks about the owners presenting for approval, a plan for residence care supervision and treatment and that it would be staffed appropriately to the needs of the residents that are in that residential care home. And as part of your staff packet, we attached a residential program plan for Courage to Change. So I hope you had a chance to look at that. That is something that has to be approved and is going to be a separate motion for approval as part of this conditional use permit. And just to cover the highlights of that, that particular plan for everyone else, the personalized, it is a personalized sustainable recovery program from prescription medication misuse that treats the prevailing cause or individually targets the neurotransmitter and brainwave imbalances. And I'm sure that Judith can do a much better job of explaining this to you and will after I'm done with my presentation. It's also a state licensed program and it does not require any nursing supervision. It's, as it does not treat symptoms medically. And the staffing of this program will meet the requirements of the Colorado Division of Behavioral Health. And the staff will be certified by the Colorado Department of Regulatory Agencies as certi- as certified addiction counselors two and three. And executive director, CEO, and full-time resident staff will be our applicant who is here to speak to us, Ms. Judith Anne Miller. And her resume was also attached for you. And she did provide me another resume this evening. I could send that around for you to look at, or if you're interested in looking at that, I can do that as well. And the applicant will do a much lengthier presentation to describe this program. Standard number three is to make sure that the home is licensed and inspected by state and other appropriate agencies in there to provide proof of this licensure and insurance coverage. And they will be licensed by the Colorado Department of Human Services, Division of Behavioral Health. And a field supervisor will conduct inspections as prescribed by their underlying organization, the Division of Behavioral Health. And they will be required, as a condition of this permit, to provide proof of insurance and a copy of their state licensure. And that should be received prior to operating the facility. Standard number four relates to the number of residents per home and it's determined by planning commission. And this determination criteria is based on several factors that I'll go over here and talk about how we feel complies. The request, though, is for one staff that would be full-time, twenty-four by seven, there with the residents at all times. And they would actually, as long as it's one staff, but there will be one person living there predominantly the whole time, and that will be Ms. Miller. And eight residents. And the lot size is one of the factors that it calls out. This lot size is one hundred and eight, nine hundred square feet. And the home is four thousand four hundred and fifty-eight square feet, which there will be at short periods of the month, one time during the month for one hour, they'll probably have a staff meeting that would be around fifteen people. But the normal amount of people in this home will be the nine to ten. And the, that second staffer, because the average will be, there'll be two people during the day hours that are staffers. And they'll allow for full-time residents, that'll allow for them to live comfortably, we feel, staff feels that way. And the staffing is another area that it asks for us to use as a determination criteria. And we felt that the resume that she provided showed capability and she'll be making those staffing decisions that filter down. And there will be one staff member onsite at all times with all the residents. And up to no more than six staff in rotation, but not living onsite. And they may come in as part of the individual treatment programs at various times. And this will average no, there'll be an average of no more than two staff members onsite at any one time. And then I talked about the staff meetings. There's also a family day that they allow for on Sundays and that's from nine AM to six PM. And she's made pre-arrangements with the owner of the Bed and Breakfast, Mr. Frank Gray, I believe. And they would be able to stay in the Bed and Breakfast and then they can walk down. And it's actually within walking distance to do their visits. And they'll have staggered visits because their counselors will be there as well. Also considerations for neighborhood and proximity to the neighbors. This first picture here is a view from Troll Road looking up the driveway into this residence. And as you can see, it's quite treated, especially in the summer months, to where the visibility of seeing it from Troll Road is pretty hard to do. And this is the view from the closest resident to the west, the southwest of there. And this is looking from their driveway up and this is the residence here. That's just, oh, it's just over two hundred feet between the two of those residents and that's the closest one, the closest resident. And then this is the view looking down from the Bed and Breakfast and you can barely see through there, that's the home. But they would walk down into there if they visited. There are no homeowner association or covenants for this particular area that would need to be considered. And that driveway is a hundred and eighty feet from Troll Road. Another thing to consider is the number of bedrooms and roommates. And I've listed a table here that describes, there are four bedrooms in this home. There's a master and I call them guest one, two, and three. Two of them are on the lower level. The master, I believe, is on the upper level and I think the guest room is on the main level or the upper level. And these are the sizes of those rooms and as well as the type of bed that they would be using. There will be three beds in the master room, two in the guest number one, two full-size beds, two twin beds in each of the lower-level bedrooms. And if you're wondering why there would be two paired up for each room, that's actually considered good for the program. This is a group therapy. So to have them together is actually part of the treatment. They help each other and they're going to be missing their family in the evenings, so that also helps alleviate and calm them in that way. And she's going to be using this as in a reward system as well. So the, the longer that you stay in, the better that you're doing in the program, you basically work your way up to the nicer rooms in the master area. And then that's recommended at least to her bedroom. And the next one is that the primary residence of its, of its owner shall be the operator of the facility and at least ninety percent or more ownership. Ms. Judith Anne Miller does have ninety percent ownership. And I liked this quote, this was something that came from her words exactly in her application. "I would love to be a resident of this property and I love Woodland Park, the city above the Standard six talks about the type of residence. And again, it's specified in our guidance that planning commission determines this. And it's determined based on the following criteria. I'm not going to go through the homes and the staffing because I've already covered that. And some of this will get redundant towards the end, so I'll be just giving you what I haven't already given you. But you can ask any questions at the end. The type of resident that we're going to be having, again, eight professional career-oriented women who misuse prescription medications only. No participants that would be required to be in correctional facilities, halfway homes or medical treatment facilities, and no persons addicted to illicit drugs allowed in a program, in this program. And then also the justifiable need. And there was a big study that was done, a national study that determined among the states where the biggest problems were with drug, prescription drug misuse. And Colorado is the second worst state for prescription drug misuse. More than two hundred and fifty-five thousand Coloradans misuse prescription drugs. And to top that off, forty-eight thousand women died from prescription painkiller overdoses from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand and ten. And the governor, state goal is to prevent this by ninety-two thousand Coloradans from engaging in non-medical use of prescription pain medications by two thousand and sixteen. Standard seven is to provide medical care at a lower level than in a medical treatment facility, clinic, or institutional home. We found this to comply as well. It does not treat symptoms medically. It focuses on recovery of the underlying cause of symptoms. And again, targeting neurotransmitter and brainwave imbalances. And on-call, there will be an on-call twenty-four by seven doctor available, basically to prescribe regimens of prescriptions that would be suited to, designed to that individual. And I'm sure Judith can get into this a little bit better than me in her presentation. And if there is a need, there's the Pike's Peak Regional Medical Center. Standard number eight, making sure that it meets the current uniform building code requirements for current, for occupancy classification. And this home was built and received its certificate of occupancy in December two thousand and four. And then just last month, received its approval for a remodel of the lower level. And so that went through building code re-looks, basically during that remodel. And the filled, there is a field supervisor, again, that's appointed through the Division of Behavioral Health. And they approve some lower requirements to the building code. They look at handicap access and all those other things. And they're required to meet those requirements through the state to receive their license and approval. Standard nine relates to the operators and owners. Shall present for approval, a plan for care of the maintenance of the home that's consistent with well-groomed properties equivalent to that of the surrounding area homes. And I showed you picture comparisons at the beginning. They did attach as well, a home, care, and maintenance plan as attachment C of your staff report. And all the residents will have daily chores that they will be obligated to do. And they have, are involved in a take-back-the-drug-day disposal of drugs program, meaning they won't be disposing their prescription drugs down the toilets or into our septic sewer systems. Clients will not have vehicles on the premises, so it's not going to create clutter, there's not going to be too many cars that are going to be there. And the snow will be plowed each time there's a snowfall. They do have included in this transfer of property, they do have plows and blowers that are included in that. This next portion's the conditional use permit criteria. A lot of it's very redundant, so I'm going to skim over this very quickly. But I did feel that there were some things that were unique that hadn't been discussed previously. The first criteria for a conditional use permit talks about demonstrating a direct need to be located at the proposed location. This, because of its area of mixed uses, it fits nicely. It's also natural topop- topographic seclusion and serenity of wildlife and outdoor amenities. That's what appealed to our applicant most because it lends to the therapy of this particular group of residents. And, and they will want to maintain, be anonymous of sorts. So they're not going to be noise makers and be creating all sorts of nuisance issues. And this, there's really minimal mitigation with this property. Criteria number two, not endangering public health and welfare. Again, it's met during remodel, the international building code, firearm martial requirements. And it's part of their program, they're highly motivated to give back to their, their home, their family, and anonymous, again, being a factor. Not substantially injuring, not injuring value of property values, vicinity properties. Mixed use, again, with ample buffer, showed you the distances from the area residences. We talked about the closest one being over two hundred feet. It's suitable, it's serene, it's lending to the intent of the therapy. And we've received feedback, positive feedback and support. Shall be in harmony with the area, is similar to the other dwelling units. We're welcoming this to a mixed-use area because it's offering amenities within walking distance, yet it's adjacent to our residential nature. There's a couple of residential areas in there as well. So it fits into this sort of mixed-use area. And we've had supportive neighborhood feedback. Needs to conform to all city plans. The biggest one here that I want to focus on is the growth management. This is a, our future comprehensive plan map. It shows, basically that, that mixed use is going to be maintained in the future. That's what we're working towards when we're looking at the city in the future. And it shows it as a mixed use and it's supportive. It supports the community well-being, education, and health and recreation values found in our comprehensive plan. Conforming to city regulations, all of our city-related departments, finance, utilities, engineering, and planning have all looked at this from perspectives that relate to all of these items. And they all approved it of moving forward. And there will be a requirement with a waived fee to have a city business license through the city business department, as well as binding those service lines could sustain eight residents and one staff. Criteria seven talks about traffic, whether it's going to create additional traffic. It's not, traffic in and out is going to be fewer than ten trips per day. Parking meets the, the current needs, actually exceeds it. Visitors, if they come to visit, they'll, they've got that very nicely located Bed and Breakfast where they can stay and then walk the short distance to visit. And pre-arrangements have been made with that owner. It meets the parking requirements for residential boarding, rooming houses, one parking space for each bedroom. And as you can see on this picture here, there's two spaces here, there's three spaces in the garage, and four in front of the garage. So that's going to be more than sufficient, especially considering they won't be bringing their cars with them. Criteria number eight talks about appropriate regard to topography and environmentally significant features. If it's well into the surroundings, it's an existing structure. Again, that remodel approved just recently here in December. And it made, that remodel, in addition, also made for special adjustments to better mitigate the drainage in that area. This was one of the homes that suffered from the one-hundred-year storm that we went through in August. And that was part of the remodel, was to fix the lower rooms. Here's a picture of before the flood mitigation. As you can see, it was all dirt. There was an egress window at the lower level to each bedroom. And they've made special improvements to slope that area so that the drainage and then paint, concrete it, so that it will root all of the water away from those windows on that west side. And they've also added this overhang. And then criteria number nine is adequate water supply, waste disposal, protection methods, and water drainage. The city utilities director assessed the current service lines to the additional residents and staff and, and feels that it, it will be sufficient. They do understand that until they get in there and they're in full use, you know, it's hard to know what the actual functionality will be. But there will be increased usage to their utilities, obviously. And it could spawn, in the future, maybe necessitate increase to lines, but that would be ways into the future and not something that we could assess at this time. Air quality impacts would be low. Criteria number ten has to do with not unduly increasing public danger. And this is not going to create any safety hazards. Again, that remodel needing international building code. And we've got that Division of Behavioral Health inspection coming in as a requirement of state licensure. Criteria number eleven talks about providing architectural design schemas and amenities and other aesthetic enhancement measures. There are no proposed changes to the interior or exterior of this particular location. As you can see, it's quite nice. That's one of the things that's most appealing about it, is its location, being serene, tucked away up into the trees, away from visibility for the most part. And it carries a nice mountain theme through it. There's no need to improve any of that. It meets all of the criteria. away up into the trees, away from visibility for the most part. And it carries a nice mountain theme through it. There's no need to improve any of that. It meets all of the criteria. We have three motions with conditions of approval. The first motion is that staff moves to approve a residence care home in accordance with section eighteen, point three-three, point one-three-zero of Municipal Code with the following conditions. Number one, the state license for the residence care home will be obtained, and prior to operating the facility, a copy will be provided to staff. Number two, proof of insurance must be received by staff prior to operating the residence care home. Number three, applicant must submit the C-two-C business license application, and that fee will be waived due to its status as a five-oh-one-C-three private nonprofit program. Motion and condition number two, the second motion is to move to approve the type of residence for this residential care home is for recovery of professional, career-oriented women who misuse prescription medications. The capacity of this residence is no more than eight residents and one full-time live-in CEO resident-owner for the program. Third motion, move to approve the program plan and the home care and maintenance plan for courage to change as submitted by the applicant. So we're recommending approval. Any questions?
Why don't we, since we always end up with the staff and the applicant up there at the same time, why don't we hear the applicant?
Excellent.
And then we will ask our questions of both of you.
Okay, sounds good.
That is, if the applicant is going to make-
Yes, the applicant has a presentation.
Could you please state your name and address, please?
I'm Judith Ann Miller. My address is four-one-two-five-zero Alfred Road, A-L-F-O-R-D Road in Simla, Colorado.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and welcome, everybody. I'd just like to tell you a little bit about the program that we will be offering to the women who come to our facility. First, I'd like to introduce you to Dr. Nora Volkov. She is the Director of the National Drug and Alcohol Abuse Program. She is the one that has actually come out and told the whole world that addiction is a brain disease. It's no longer considered a moral disease like the Volstead Acts thought it would be. It is a real disease. It has an onset, a progression, and an end, and the end is generally death. I don't know what to push here for the next slide. Okay, I just wanted to show you, a lot of research has been done over the last five, ten decades, and we have finally really determined what brains look like when they're under an addiction. And these are three different brains, that show you the healthy brains and the brains that are of addictive people, that are shown by one of the clinics in California. We can skip that one, that's just a lot of information that Dr. Volkov says. She's, she's a proponent of treating addiction as a brain disease and not as the symptoms. The brain is damaged by addiction. It's damaged a lot more by prescription drugs than any other kind of drug. And prescription drug abuse has become a national epidemic, and that's why we want to specialize in prescription drugs in this particular program. We have a program in Colorado Springs that specializes in all addictions, illicit drugs such as cocaine, heroin, meth, marijuana. But this one in Woodland Park will feature just prescription drugs. In our program, we work with care and feeding of the brain, because it is a brain disease. We repair the neurotransmitters, rebalance the neurotransmitters, because they all get unbalanced because of prescription drugs and other, other things that could have happened to the brain. So the first thing we do is we rebalance the neurotransmitters, and neuroscience has shown us many ways to deal with the brain and to deal with addiction now. Most addiction programs only do the twelve steps. They, and the twelve steps are very, very important. However, we believe that you have to be able to count to twelve to do the twelve steps. So we work with the brain, and neuroscience has given us a lot of ways to do that. That's more about the neuroscience. We fully understand how the brainwaves work. With addiction, the alpha, theta waves are usually low, and the beta waves are usually high. And so what we do with our program, with our EEG program that works with the brain, is that we rebalance and reroute the brainwaves so that they all, for the alpha, theta, delta, high-low beta waves, all work together the way they're supposed to work. We do use low-energy neurofeedback, which was developed by Dr. Lynn Ochs in California. And this is an EEG system that applies to the twenty-one EEG sites of the brain. And we do a mapping of everybody's brain that is a treatment regime for us, that teaches us what to do to help each brain recover, because each brain might have individual This is, shows a standard map of what we do when they come in. You can see the map on top and the map below, the differences between how it looks after the treatment. It's highly scientific. We can go through these rather quickly, but we did one progress report for the first year in two thousand four, when we started using the low-energy neurofeedback. We had one hundred clients come in, and this is the demographics. There were seventy-eight Caucasians, seven Hispanic, eight, one Asian, five Native Americans, and nine African-Americans, and that was our, our group of one hundred that we used the initial feedback on. They came in with all of these diagnoses, alcoholism, cocaine, marijuana. Most of them were also addicted to prescription drugs. Because what happens when people get addicted to the illicit drugs, they have anxiety and depression, and they can't sleep. So they go to their physician, and they get a prescription. And this prescription doesn't work, it just exacerbates the symptoms, because the prescriptions are only working on the symptoms and not the causes. So we treated all of these one hundred people for thirty days. They came in with anxiety, depression, bipolar disorder, migraines, couldn't sleep, ADHD, PTSD, and many of them were very, very angry. Well, after thirty days, one hundred percent of these people, all of those symptoms have gone away, and they're now in full recovery, with no drugs, no medication, and they're fully natural. We also discovered, we went into the mindfulness part of research, and we discovered that there are nine functions of the prefrontal cortex, and we'll go through these very quickly. It's a very scientific report. I did this to, to show for the National Institute on Drug Abuse and for the International Science on Neurofeedback. But the nine functions of the prefrontal cortex are what the decision-making process comes from. And when people have an addictive brain, the prefrontal functions of the brain are not functioning. So with our neurofeedback program, with neurotransmitter repair and the brainwave repair, the nine prefrontal conditions start to function. And this helps them be able to make decisions, and it takes about a month, and that's why we want to have a month retreat for these people to, to really get their brain to optimal We can go through those, those are very intricate.
Okay.
To the next one. Go to the next one. We also do suppression maps of the brain, and this shows a before-and-after suppression map, shows you how highly scientific it is. You would have to be trained in this technique to understand what these are, but these two maps show you the differences between the first treatments and the last treatments. This shows the EEG receptor sites, the twenty-one receptor sites, and then the brain, which is, the front part of the brain, shows the nine functions of the, the prefrontal cortex. So that was our, our story in a nutshell of how it worked. We tested the beta waves, we can go through those very quickly, too, the beta waves, the alpha waves, the theta waves, and the delta waves. And by the time we finished with the treatments after thirty days, all of these prefrontal cortex functions were functioning adequately. We also measured anxiety and depression, we'll run through that very quickly. Go ahead and go through those. We handled anxiety and depression very, within a month. Here's our brain room that we have at the Courage Exchange Ranch down in Colorado Springs. It's a residence that houses eight people as well, and that just shows where we do our brain work. We have an integrated model of care that has seven components. And the first component, and we think the most important one before all the other components can work, is to, to work with the brain, care and feeding of the brain, where we do the low-energy neurofeedback, we do the neuroscience and neurotransmitter rebalancing. And we also have a biomat, which has infrared rays, that has amethyst crystals in it to take the body into the deepest relaxation, to help with anxiety, depression, to release the toxins from the body, and to help people relax. That shows, again, the prefrontal cortex that we work with. Go ahead. We also work with cognitive and behavioral therapies, but we found that until the brain really works adequately, the cognitive therapies, they're, they're just, they're not very functional. We need to have the brain working before they can learn and, and can change their We do EMDR, which is Eye Movement Desensitization and Reprocessing. This is very helpful for people who have had PTSD. We've had several war veterans that have come through our program with a lot of PTS. And what the lens system does, it's a non-cognitive program, so people don't get to decide what they're going to work on. The brain gets worked on by the machine, not us, by the program, by the software program. But oftentimes, a memory will come up that they have suppressed, and that's why we work on the suppression map. And a lot of the war veterans have had a lot of suppression. We had one guy come in that had jumped out of an airplane and his chute didn't open. He crashed on the ground, and the rest of the troops left him for dead, but he wasn't dead. And he came into our program, we got him off all of his meds, and he's totally functioning now with the lens and with EMDR. We had another man come to our program from Homeland Security, from the nine-eleven incident. He was in the Philadelphia recovery site where the plane had crashed, and after he had received his first lens treatment, he, he saw that site again, and we had to do EMDR to help him recover that site. What happens when someone experiences something very traumatic? Every cell in the body retains pain from that site, or from that experience. And that often leads to addiction, because people want to self-medicate, so they feel good. They feel better and try to get rid of that pain. So these are the things that are, we're doing to work on the cause that might cause addiction. We also do tapping, and that's another method that helps people relax, is something that can be taught to them, if they have an anxious moment, they can relax. It works very, very well. It's highly scientific, and it's evidence-based. This is the picture of our biomat, which is very, very helpful. When we get an operation here, I'd invite each of you to come and try the biomat, it's a wonderful experience. We're working on a lot of the, the new theories, we're always educating, we're, we're going to seminars, workshops. Our staff is probably the, the highest educated in the whole state. Five of our staff members that work in the Colorado Springs area have master's degree, and we continually educate our, our clients or our staff members so that they can be the best staff members possible. We have a spiritual component, very experiential part, and this property on Trow Lane works very, very well for that, because of the wildlife, and the flowers, and the, the land, and the spirituality of the property. We work with changing criminal behavior or self-destructive behavior, because addiction leads to destructive behavior. It leads to loss of family, it leads to loss of career, it leads to loss of their home. People end up lying, cheating, and stealing to get their drug or to get whatever they need so that they can survive. And they're not really bad people, they're just addicted and their brain doesn't work. So by helping them get their brain up to optimal functioning, and to teach them new ways of living, we can help them with their self-destructive behavior. We do career enhancement. For the program that we are proposing for Woodland Park, we will be working with professional women. These will be doctors, nurses, dentists, anesthesiologists, therapists, veterinarians, pilots, any person that might need a license to practice their profession. And so we will be helping them along with their EAP people, their employee assistance people, and their supervisors that work who will, of course, be cognizant of their stay here. We will help them retain their job, help them get back to work. We work with family relationship repair, and that's why we want to have the family meetings, the family sessions. It's so ideal to have the bed and breakfast right next door, because when families come, they can stay there for overnight, or a weekend, or even a full week, when they come in for family therapy. Because we have to help the whole family put their, their lives back together so that they can support their addict. We will be having some outpatient services, that's probably going to be here with the Journey, place with, with Barb and her DUI program, so that we can offer lens to people in the community, because there are a lot of people in Woodland Park that might like to have optimally-functioned brains, too. They might like to also get off on some of their medications that they are, that aren't doing well for them. So we want to do an outpatient program as an adjunct to this. We have a lifetime continuing care plan, that anybody comes to our program, we stay in touch with them forever. They come to reunions, they come into sweat lodges, they come into a lot of the things we do. We have a newsletter, we give them a pin when they leave, and they get a feather for each year that they say in sobriety, up to seven feathers, and I've given out two thousand seven feathers. So we've helped a lot of people survive. And that indicates that we have a high success rate, because we think we're having about an eighty percent success rate, whereas most programs have an eighty to ninety percent failure rate, which is because they only treat with the twelve steps. We also treat with the twelve steps, and we will be going to meetings here in the Woodland Park area, and having meetings in the home, because it is important to understand the twelve steps of recovery. Go to the next one, the next one. These are some pictures of some before-and-after clients that we've had in the past. The one on the left shows the man coming in, and the one on the right, we even helped this man get a new set of teeth. Next one. This girl came in on meth, and you can see the difference in her physiological changes, and she's now married, has a master's degree in counseling, and has two children. This kid came out of the Denver County Jail, and he was addicted to prescription drugs. In fact, he was stealing and writing other people's prescriptions, and we helped him get back on track. You can see the difference between how he looked before and after. Next one. And this is probably very, very indicative of what people look like when they are addicted to prescription drugs, the one on the left, and then after a time, she starts to improve, and fits to the next one. And then she finally did find recovery, and she got her family back. So this is what our, our program is all about, is helping people regain their lives, get their career back, get their family back, and become productive citizens. Well, I wanted to end the story with the chicken story, which is, we tell all the people about the chicken story, because when addicts are in their full throes of their addiction, they think that no one can see. So this is a story about a king who had lost his, a knight of his round-take- So this is a story about a king who, um, had lost his, uh, a night of his round table, and he was interviewing some people, some guys to, um, fill that vacancy, and three guys came to interview for the, the vacancy at the night of the round table. And the king gave each one of them a chicken, told them to go out into the woods, or go out somewhere where no one could see and kill the chicken. So the first man went way out into the woods, and that's the first picture there, and he killed the chicken, 'cause nobody could see. The next man went way into a cave where nobody could see, and he killed the chicken. And the third man came back and he was still carrying the chicken, and he said, everywhere I went, the chicken could see. So that's the story of our program and how we work. Um, I'll be happy to answer questions and, um...
Okay, staff, questions for either applicant or staff?
What is the typical length of stay?
About twenty-eight days, some people stay ninety, sixty, ninety days. Other people have stayed a full year, not very many, but some. They can stay as long as they need to.
And where are they coming from?
We've had people from all over the world, London and, uh, Sweden and, uh, Scotland and all over the United States, and we expect that the people from, uh, the professional, uh, communities will come from every state too. We're contacting the peer assistance programs in every state and the doctor, the physician's healthcare programs in all the states, all the pilots, all the people who might be licensed that need help retaining their career. So they'll be coming from all over the United States, and, uh, they will not be driving in, either family will bring them, or we will get them at the airport and bring them in ourselves.
How would you define professional and then career-oriented?
Uh, anybody that has a career, that their life depends upon their career. Um, I'm a career-oriented person, probably all of you are. In this instance, it's probably gonna be more geared toward the medical profession, because that's where the highest use of, misuse of prescription drugs is today. Dentists and doctors and, um, people in the medical profession can get, get a hold of drugs very, very easily, prescription drugs. And, uh, that's where, where the, the problem arises, but any profession that, uh, career-oriented, someone that needs their career in order to survive. If they lose their career, then they can't survive, and they lose their family, and they lose their house, and, uh, they eventually lose their lives.
And then, uh, what kind of medications do you perceive like being the most prevalent when you have incoming patients? Like, what prescription drugs do you plan on dealing with the most?
Oh, a lot of benzodiazepines, a lot of opiates, the painkillers, uh, the SSRIs, the selective serotonin reuptake inhibitors, those are the three most, uh, categories that we'll be dealing with, they're the most dangerous. Uh, the benzodiazepines and the opiates sometimes only takes three days to become addicted to them.
Any, anybody else? More?
I have a few more, okay, go ahead. Um, and then, uh, can you briefly describe a day, like, what are, like, a typical day?
Sure. We're usually, uh, by seven o'clock and getting ready for the day, breakfast by eight. By nine o'clock is the first, um, group therapy, goes from nine till eleven, and then break for lunch and have some quiet time or some personal time. By one or two o'clock, back in a group again, and throughout the day, uh, someone might slip out of a group and have an individual counseling session. Uh, but, uh, groups will go until four. The clients prepare their own meals, so someone will be preparing their evening meal. Uh, usually in the evening, we would hold a meeting or go out to a meeting, and during that time, uh, the lens treatments will be offered. They only take about ten or fifteen minutes per person, so they'll be experiencing them. They'll have quiet time, they'll have time to, uh, write in their journals, uh, to be outside in the garden, uh, things like that. But it's a pretty busy day, lights are off at eleven and they're, um, up again at seven.
And I just have two, two more questions, uh, what's the, uh, estimate cost for a patient to come in, let's say for just for thirty day program?
For this program, it's gonna range from twenty-eight thousand to thirty thousand, which is the lowest in the country. Most of them are thirty to fifty thousand right now. Our program in Colorado Springs, which is for everyone, for all of the drugs, all the illicit drugs, that one's only fifteen thousand.
And then, uh, do you see any potential hazards? Uh, so you have a patient who doesn't agree with, you know, whether they're maybe with, you know, family force, I know it's voluntary, but let's say you get a patient who decides they don't wanna be there on, you know, day ten and they, they run away, do you have any precautions for that, or?
Yeah, we do, um, one, a wonderful thing about this house is it does have a security system. Every door that opens, the bell rings, so the staff people will know that someone's coming or going. And, uh, Mr. Hobson, we can take that off if you want to, and I said, no, we'd like to leave that on. Uh, but usually after the third day, after the third lens treatment, it's surprising how their anger goes away, how their, um, distress goes away, and how they are very welcoming the program. Uh, the, the other attribute, uh, that's prevalent among the career-oriented people that wanna retain their license and their career, is that they are very compliant. They wanna stay in the program, they wanna complete, they will really follow the rules and really work hard at their, uh, their own recovery program.
Excellent, and I guess, uh, just one question on top of that, why is it, uh, for both genders, why is it just oriented toward one?
Um, we have done that, and that's what we do in the, the program in Colorado Springs. Uh, we believe that if we separate the genders, they will focus more on themselves. We don't want to have the women fixing their hair every day and putting on their makeup and flirting with the men and the men, you know?
Makes sense.
And it's just easier for the men, and we hope it someday, uh, in the near future to open another program for men, but we're starting with women, we have to start with one and get ready for the other. The, another thing that's happening to us is that we're pretty renowned right now, we're the only program in the United States that is offering what we offer as far as repairing the brain, so we're getting international acclaim. We had people from Singapore and from London in our last training session for lens, and we'll be opening another program in Houston and another program in California, uh, during the summer months.
Excellent, that's all I have.
Anybody else?
Well, first of all, I'm very impressed, thank you for, uh, teaching us about the, uh, about the program, and a couple of fairly simple questions. Will you have the ability to select the women who will come to Woodland Park in this, in this, in this residence?
Pretty much we will, we are now initiating, um, an electronic health record, and people will be making their application before they come to the program, they'll be making their application online, they'll probably also be referred by their employee assistance program or their employer, so, um, we'll probably be very selective. We expect to have a waiting list very shortly, because we can only take five to eight people at a time.
Uh, will insurance, uh, cover the cost of the program for most of these ladies?
We expect it will.
Uh, conventional insurance?
Yeah, all kinds of insurance, we take everything except Medicaid, and the only reason we don't take Medicaid is it doesn't pay.
Low reimbursement, right?
Yes, no reimbursement.
Or none, right. Uh, second question, and I don't remember what page I read it on, the, the doors are locked at night?
Yes, we lock the doors at night when we go to bed.
And you described the alarm system and, uh, you'll know if a door or a window is open?
Yes.
Uh, in the event of a fire, uh, how will these ladies, well, and yourself, be able to, uh, exit the premises?
Well, we'll unlock the doors from the inside, and there's several doors, so there'll, there'll be doors on each floor that they can exit from.
Okay. And I, I have one, one question for staff. I understand that, that you had a neighborhood meeting January third?
That's correct, yes.
But you had several telephone calls, et cetera, uh, and I wanna make absolutely sure that no, that, that no one contacted you, that, that you didn't speak to anyone who had objection, you know, who was, who was in the immediate, uh, area?
Uh, you, as I expressed that in the beginning, there was, um, I guess not really objection but concern for vicinity values, and I cleared those up pretty quickly just by explaining that this was going to be a select eight women, career professionals, and just for prescription, uh, medication misuse. And the fact, just the property and, and describing how it is, uh, an anonymous program, and they wanna remain anonymous, and there won't be nuisances, and all three instances, um, they seemed, in fact, I had one, the neighbor to Troll Road, seventy-seven Troll Road, uh, the closest resident say that he, by the end of the conversation, he said, well, I'm in support of this, then I'm not even gonna come, so, um, yeah.
So we're clear with the neighbors then?
I believe so.
Okay, good, thank you.
Until we hear. Benin?
Thanks.
Uh, I had a couple of questions. Ms. Miller, you, uh, you talk about in your presentation, the nexus between or the relationship between, uh, the prescription drugs and other, other drugs. Will these people have had, will these be purely prescription drugs, uh, abusers?
Yes, yes.
And, and have no relationship to alcohol?
We will not be accepting people with heroin, uh, cocaine, meth, uh, pot, we will not be accepting those types of clients, it'll just be prescription med abuse.
Okay, do you ever have an issue with withdrawal with these people?
Uh, we do, but that-
Sounds like very benign, you know, they come in and turn around quickly.
It is, it's an issue if it's not handled carefully, and that's why we have an MD and a psychiatrist on our staff. We do a titration plan for each person, because it is, especially if somebody's on Xanax, um, they could have seizures if they stop immediately, so we have to titrate them down.
So there will be, quote, drugs in the, in the facility that you will administer?
They will bring their prescriptions in, yes.
Okay.
And we will lock them in a safe, and then there'll be certain times of the day when they receive their prescriptions, and according to our MD or our psychiatrist titration plan, they will be titrating down. If they're on, uh, forty milligrams, they might go down to twenty milligrams, and they might go every other day until they're totally off. And while they are titrating down from the prescriptions, we're titrating them up on the neuroceuticals, which helps them repair their neurotransmitters to the brain, so it takes the place of what they were trying to do by treating the symptoms. Uh, I just read an article by Carl Pfeiffer, who was a famous orthomolecular, uh, doctor, and he said, any drug that can have an effect on a neurological system can be replaced by a nutrient, and that's our goal. We, we do a natural way of recovery with amino acids, we work with the neuroscience program, I've worked with them for ten years. In fact, they used our program to help design some of their products for, um, helping people rebalance their neurotransmitters. When people come in, their dopamine level is probably very high, their serotonin level is very low, and that's probably why they can't sleep, that's why they have anxiety. Uh, serotonin helps with the feeling of well-being, and so we have to bring down the dopamine and bring up the serotonin so that they balance, and we're scientifically aligned to do that.
I think one final question, I mean, one full-time staff in a residence with eight other addicted people, I mean, that ratio in term, at least my image that I may have gained from TV or something like that, you know, my, uh, you know, my image is of a rather diminutive person like yourself, uh, trying to control people that, uh, you know, that are addicted. Do you see no, foresee no problem with that, or do you have a system that, uh, will get you support if you need it, uh, at the time that you need it?
Right, uh, first of all, my diminutive stature is very misleading, I've been a farmer and rancher all my life, and I was telling somebody I did the manner to incline last summer, so I'm pretty strong, but on the other hand, there'll, there'll only be one person during the nighttime while people are sleeping.
Mm-hmm.
The rest of the time, there'll be two or three people on board, and people will be engaged in either a group, and some, they might be in a group with one counselor and in an individual session with another counselor, and maybe doing a lens session with another counselor, so there'll not be two or three counselors during the daytime, during the working hours, but only one person at night, when they're sleeping. And the person at night will be awake all night long, they will not sleep, they will be awake, there'll be night watch people.
Thank you, uh, Lisa, the, the capacity of the home to handle eight or nine full-time people, in terms of, uh, water, sewage, and that sort of thing, are they, is this a, I forget, I may have read, but is it a septic system or is it a?
No, they're on city water.
They're on city water and sewer, okay, and we've all evaluated that, it's no problem, right?
Yep. Our utilities director is nodding his head.
He's nodding his head?
Yeah.
Well, when he nods his head. All right, they will, okay. Uh, I have no further questions, uh, let's open up, is there anybody, public comment? Anybody that wants to speak or has an issue? Yes?
I'm Frank Rad.
Can you, can you come approach?
Yes, please. Uh, state your name and address.
Frank Gray, one five nine Troll Road, I'm county, so I don't know if I can talk or not.
Yes, absolutely, public hearing.
Thank you very much. Yeah, we're in support of this project, it's, it sounds real good to us.
That's...
And that's all I have to say, but I-
That's all you have to say?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you folks.
Okay, uh, well, that consists of public comment, uh, we have no rebuttals since everybody seems, uh, planning commissioners, uh, any final questions? Okay, uh, since there's, uh, no debate, we'll move on to the motions, so we're looking at three, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Uh, so on the first motion, looking for someone to, uh, articulate that? Any volunteers?
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll do the first, and I'd like to read it into the record.
Yep.
Since we have some conditions, uh, I move to approve a residence care home in accordance with section eighteen point three-three point one-three-oh of the municipal code with the following conditions. The state license for this residence care home will be obtained, and prior to operating the facility, a copy will be provided to staff. Two, proof of insurance must be received by staff prior to operating the residence care home. Three, applicant must submit the C two C business license application. The fee for this business license is waived due to this program being a five oh one C three private nonprofit program.
Second?
I second. Thank you. Rollinger?
Aye.
Standard?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Yoxheimer?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
The first motion carries unanimously.
Anybody wish to?
I can do two if you want me to.
You can do them all if you want. You're good.
Uh, second motion, move to approve the type of residence for this residence care home is for the recovery of professional, career-oriented woman, women who misuse prescription medications. The capacity of this residence is no more than eight residents and one full-time live-in CEO resident slash owner for this program.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Standard?
Aye.
Vogel?
Yes.
Yoxheimer?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
And Rollinger?
Aye.
Second motion passes unanimously.
Uh, third motion, I'm getting my money's worth tonight. Move to approve the program plan and the home care and maintenance plan for courage to change as submitted by the applicant.
Second?
Vogel?
Yes.
Yoxheimer?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Rollinger?
A resounding aye.
And Standard?
Yes.
Third motion passes unanimously. In this case, we'll move forward to the city council docket, uh, next Thursday for the first reading of the ordinance, uh, conditional use ordinance, and then the public hearing- And then the public hearing will be held on February sixth. Thank you.
Good job, Lisa.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the, uh, the public hearing. Uh, we now have our report session. Chairman does not have a report. Uh, any commissioners have anything to add? No? Sally?
Three quick items, uh, on your desks this evening. We are catching up on our monthly reports. You have the October, November and December monthly reports. And, uh, just to note that in implementing our new building department at the end of, uh, December, uh, regional building department did two hundred and seventy-four inspections uh, from the November, December time period. And, uh, we processed building permits that valued close to twenty million dollars during the two months. Uh, needless to say, we did have a couple of big projects, including the, uh, uh, the apartment complex. So a couple of houses, a couple of duplexes. So it added up fairly quickly. But, uh, we were quite busy and quite active in our, uh, first ramp up to our building department. Second item is that we will have a meeting on the twenty-third. We'll have a short agenda item, which will be an amendment, uh, to the Woodland Station overlay map. We have an adjacent property owner who would like to be included in the overlay district for Woodland Station, so you'll be, um, seeing that ordinance. And then secondly, we will have a work session to also look at the draft ordinance for the accessory dwelling units that I've been working with the city attorney on. And then lastly, uh, I am very pleased to announce, uh, Mr. DeBeau will be joining a very, uh, select group of folks who are listed on this plaque. He is the, uh, recent award winner of the Les Malot Award and will be receiving that honor at the end of this month with the Teller County Shares Volunteer Awards Program. So we're very pleased, uh, that Mr. DeBeau is going to, um, have his name on this plaque and join a number of other folks in our community who have served us so well.
Here. Okay, with that, uh, with that, that concludes, uh, this meeting. We stand adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Sally, great work on the transition.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's been interesting.